Called order, the city of Columbia City Council meeting of October 4th, two thousand twenty-two. I'm gonna ask for Deanna to give the invocation and then we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, to do fairly with all of our citizens. And give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, our own nation under our individual integrity and justice as well. I'd like to ask Deanna to call the roll, please.
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane? Liston?
Here.
Detillio?
Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McBane. Detillio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing the, hearing no comments, they will stand approved as submitted. I have no readings of communications tonight. And I have no reports of commissions or boards tonight. We had one personal request to appear in front of us to make a presentation like Josiah Rouse to discuss overnight street parking. Not seeing him here, I'll move to the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. And see, we have Chief Douglas here. We have a great announcement. Fire department worked really hard. It was almost a year ago now. And trying to get a couple grants. And I think they spent at least, I don't know, a few practices, a few Tuesday nights. Almost all the firemen were helping do this application. And we were just awarded four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new fire truck from FEMA. So, thank you very much, Chief. Thanks, thanks to all the employees. It was a very, very difficult application process, so much so that we, you know, asked for help from outside consultant. And they held our hand through it and it was very, very difficult, but it paid off and thank you. And we have one more out there. We hope to.
Should be by the end of October.
So. Yeah, so we're trying to get new air packs, which are not cheap, so. So, thanks again, Chief, and tell everybody we said thanks. Yeah, even, even the paperwork now that we've got it, it's still a little overwhelming, so they're gonna continue to help us, I hope, so. Well, let's see, we believe we're gonna be starting the sidewalk soon on East Park Avenue, Springfield Road, Heck Road. Actually, it's just the East Park Avenue portion that I've been telling you about, basically from the square where it needed all the way almost to the cemetery and the pool entrance. I want to report that Moxie Events, they're doing events at the theater. And if you go to Cultural Collective's website, you can see their new lineup. That's new since the last meeting. And that will be along with the rest of the lineup. I think that they have a pretty good lineup. I think one flew over the Cuckoo's Nest is next week, if I'm not mistaken.
We're competing against one of their nights, but we'll.
Okay. We have Quentin Tarantino Film Festival this weekend. That Friday night, we have a block party and then Diane Bree Diesel's is on Saturday. The progress committee is circulating a survey. We have it on our, on our website, columbianoohio.gov. Link is posted on the website. And there's actually gonna be a meeting night, I believe it's November ninth, if I'm not mistaken. Where we're going to go to the theater and talk to some of the public that have some ideas. We did complete two more pre-applications for two more stormwater projects. And these are the same types of projects that we were just awarded this year. We were awarded the one that was gonna go from basically birdfish clear south down underneath the railroad state, railroad tracks and then up top by the oh, let's see, the east end of the cemetery and going clear to Beverly and Ray. We were awarded those, but we're just getting through that process, so it's probably gonna be about a year and a half before we get to those. But I think that was like two point seven million dollars worth of projects, so we're looking forward to that. See, we wrote a grant last week for a to help us perform a lead line survey that the EPA is requiring us to do. I want to give a shout out to Ace Hardware. They're gonna be giving us leaf bag flyers on October fifteenth. And we really appreciate them doing that. I believe they get twelve thousand bags and they're gone within one day. We do have some, any leftovers or ones that we've had in the past. We do have up here in a cabinet at City Council. Members of the progress committee met with Trish Miso's entrepreneur class and we're working on a couple concepts and jobs. We're looking forward to that. And we also have the new, I think any of them joined us tonight, but we have a new youth council that we've been pushing for. And we have eight names, so we know that one name didn't work, right? Just one person. And five didn't work, so we're gonna try eight this time to try to get somebody at each council meeting. But we hope to put them on a project to learn about how to, we're basically gonna be putting a report on our website on how to deal with planning commission and city council. I think that's gonna be their next project for the youth council. We did rebid the sanitary sewer project and we will open that bid on October twelfth. See, we've you know, as you all know, we've been considering lodging tax for the community for the last ten years. Asked Mark to give us an update. Believe we have a way in which we can apply the tax to Columbia County portion without essentially doubling the tax in Columbia County. It will be a two-step process. For that process. Legislation is on the agenda tonight for you to consider first reading. And then that chapter, you have copies of that chapter that you'll look at for the next two weeks and get back to us if you have any feedback. Okay, street department, they landscaped some previous dig sites. They put down eight tons of patch. Finishing up the still working on a little bit of stuff at West Salem Street and the East Park Avenue project. We actually had contractors out today looking at the sidewalk that I was just mentioning. Water Department, they're on a clip that they're really trying to flush all the hydrants for the year and get that done before it gets too cold. Appreciate all the departments, what they did for for the street fair. We're actually doing, still doing a couple of projects, even for getting ready for next year for the water department. Waste water, we ordered two pumps for wind jammer lift station. Park and Cemetery, we're still working with Historical Society on the Fix the Sticks project. We did complete a team mobile, team mobile grant for the stick building. And then they have an event, a couple, I think they had a fundraiser, Birdfish last Monday night and they've got one coming up on the twenty-eighth. I think the electric department, they found some low voltage on the lights uptown for the beaster lights and we put a few new controllers in over the last couple of weeks and we're gonna be ready for Christmas. Coming up, we'll have all the lights ready. Thanks to Richard for attending the AMP conference last week. The staff worked on the eighteen eighty barn service. And they're still working on that, continuing to upgrade the street lamp on Main Street. I don't, you remember, there were like twelve out and we were working on issues with the warranties and such, and we have a solution and that's what we're working our way through. Think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Lance. Any questions? You have received a copy of the building zoning department report of September twenty twenty-two. And you have also received the mayor, mayor's court report of August twenty twenty-two. Any questions or comments on those reports? And also, item ten, we do, you did receive a copy of the bill list of October fourth, twenty twenty-two. So that's in your file as well. Any comments on the bill list? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Second.
Motion second. Deanna, will you call the roll, please?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes. Thank you.
She really means it. Okay, we're gonna move to all business this time. Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three seven, this is a second reading. An ordinance amending the Columbia City zoning ordinance, thereby rezoning twelve point two three two two acres from R one residential low density and R two residential median, residential medium density zoning districts to R two P U D as planned unit development.
Tomo?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Deanna, will you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three eight, second reading. An ordinance amending the Columbia City zoning ordinance, thereby rezoning seven point three six seven acres from I two light industrial district to C four intensive and automobile oriented commercial district.
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? Deanna, call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one three nine, second reading. An ordinance amending the city, Columbia City zoning ordinance, thereby rezoning point seven nine six acres from I two light industrial district to C four intensive and automobile oriented commercial district.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? Deanna, will you call the roll?
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one four zero, second reading. An ordinance amending section two of ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash three one zero one, establishing a wait schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees for the city of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Deanna, will you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash R dash six zero nine, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Software Solutions Inc. To provide a computer software systems and services.
So move.
Second.
Deanna, will you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Move to new business. Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one four one, first reading. An ordinance amending section one oh, one zero six two point zero seven B. One, two, three, and four of the codified ordinances of Columbia, Ohio regarding rental rates in the recreation park and repealing all other ordinances in conflict herewith.
So move.
Second.
Thank you for not letting me say that again. Deanna, will you call the roll?
Any questions? Is this just an update to our rental rates?
Deanna, you call the roll?
Okay, was Detillio's question answered?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Souter?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash O dash three one four two, first reading. An ordinance enacting an excise tax on lodging furnished to transient guests by hotels and enacting chapter eight eight three of the codified ordinances of the city of Columbia, Ohio.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, comments?
I have one, and I think it, I'm just gonna point out, it was actually answered for me. In section two, we've got the boundaries as state route fourteen, but I see in the actual ordinance, state route fourteen, county line road.
Correct, that's everything south of there, the Columbia County, not Mahoney.
Yeah, it was the, the ordinance was state route fourteen.
Okay.
Actual.
There were actually some things that needed to be cleaned up in the sections, but they were just typos, sections three, four, two, four, I believe, so I've already put that email in and we'll have that fixed by the next, next meeting.
Do we need to modify the?
No.
Okay.
This might be a question for Mark, but are there any issues with the definition of hotel or motel with regard to Airbnbs? Cause I, I've seen other provisions that have an exemption for, say, if there's less than five rooms rented, that they're exempted. I just, if there's a bed and breakfast, it would fall under here and sometimes we, other jurisdictions tend to exempt smaller buildings or smaller rentals, like a bed and breakfast or if people are operating Airbnbs, I just didn't want there to be confusion. Well, I don't think that was our intent.
The way it's written, you know, take a look at it and then let me know, because when you start reading these ordinances, you've got all kinds of ideas, some that exempt Airbnbs and BnBs, others that don't. So it's what all of you want to do. If you just wanna capture what we consider traditional hotel or motel, then I'll change the definition. I mean, my idea was to get something out to all of you to take a look at, not saying, gee, this is the final. You know, just some ideas. I can make changes. I just need to know what. And as far as legally, I don't think there's a problem with it. I think it's really a preference. What you want, what you want to do on that subject as far as Airbnbs and BnBs.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you have any other problems or suggestions or anything, contact Mark. Cause you know, with, with that, with that section that you've got, so. Can do that before the next meeting.
So the way it's worded now, it includes Airbnbs and is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
It could, yeah, I would say it could definitely be read, you know, a public inn containing rooms rented out by the day, night, or for longer periods to the public. So I think that would encompass pretty much anything that's rented out for overnight stay, transient guests. So the question is, do we want to limit that at all or leave as is?
It's short-term rentals.
Yes.
This would cover, this, the way that's written, Amanda is absolutely correct. It would cover short-term rentals. So if we want to exclude it, then I need to, you know, rework the definition, which is not a problem.
How do we define short-term rentals?
Well, we defined short-term rentals in the chapter on short-term rentals. There's a definition in there. And it's basically less than thirty consecutive days is normally what you're dealing with.
Well, I think, I, I mean, personally, I think it's more important that we clarify who's gonna be subject to this tax for the hotel or motel, because I, I think it's, you know, if we define what entity is being taxed, it doesn't matter the length of stay, in my opinion. It's just whether or not they're gonna be subject to the tax. So like if we had a bed and breakfast, we used to have a bed and breakfast, so would we want someone like them subjected to this tax? If they're running out four rooms, you know, they have four rooms available for rental, you know, some neighboring county has a five-room limit that exempts anything with less than five rooms available for rental. You know, that would exempt those Airbnbs out on Route fourteen. If that's the case, but as currently written, I believe that would include them.
It would.
I think if we change like the definition of the short-term rental, we get into more problems with arguments as to how many nights people stayed and paperwork and I think we should just, you know, if we can just better define what entities we want subjected to this tax. I think that gets us to what our intention was as a city.
I would agree with the idea of not revamping the short-term rental definition. But again, we can exempt Airbnbs from this. The way that was written, it was written to be all-inclusive. And I can exempt, if it's five rooms, you're right, that's, that's a common one. But I've seen others written a different way, so you know, it's what your preference is as far as and Amanda's right, who we are going to tax for this.
Is there any way this definition can work or stretch to include regular rentals?
Cause it's, it's for transient guests for less than thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause typically, if it's more than thirty days, they have a different kind of license with the occupancy permit, so then they're typically not, they're exempted under the provisions.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure our intent was to really target an Airbnb. I think it was thinking ahead, if we get, or when we get hotels in here. You know, like Holiday Inn, just let in there overnight and put that little hotel in Salem. You know, who would have ever imagined that Salem would warrant another hotel, so. I think that was, I think that was really our intent was to get that covered before it happened. I'm not sure covering two Airbnbs makes a whole lot of sense.
Well, we have two now.
Yeah, but how many would you have?
I don't know. I mean, I, I.
Well, but I mean, those are just called Airbnbs, but would this encompass anyone who's renting out a room in their home or their home under Airbnb? So I mean, that could, it could stretch to that if we're getting, you know, nitpicky, so. I don't know how many are within the city, but if you go on Airbnb, how many homes might pop up that are available? So I know those are growing, cause a lot of people are doing, doing that, so.
And why shouldn't we get a piece of that pie?
Well, it's really not gonna fill a cavity. I mean, not a whole lot of pie there.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
But the Airbnb, Airbnb definition was only allowed in, in C four, if I'm not mistaken, so totally different conversation.
Okay.
It is. The only thing I'm gonna mention as far as the all-inclusive. If you read through this, you will see that the director of finance has a whole lot of responsibility for this, and frankly, I don't know who is the better person to be in charge of collecting this, but if we hit Airbnbs and we don't even know what ones are out there, then we're going to have to start finding that out. Not impossible, but it seems to me that that makes this a bit more cumbersome to collect.
Well, I, I go back to the fact that there is a penalty for not paying this. That if we, I mean, worst case, if we find out somebody's renting out a room and they're not, you know, they're not paying the tax, then there is a penalty for not paying the tax. But I think that's our enforcement mechanism. You know, who's gonna do the research and who's gonna actually find out? That's a great question. But there is a penalty in there. That should encourage people to go ahead and pay the three percent, so that they don't have to pay five hundred dollars and go to jail for six months.
But that does put an extra burden on the finance director. Yeah. Which you know. I mean, I'm open anyway, won't do it. I mean, it's, it's, you know, I think it's a good idea to do it all, but then how much more work is it gonna put on? Is it, is it worth it to put that extra work on our finance director?
That's, that's the issue. What are you gonna get in return for the him having to jump in to do these things?
I think I'd feel more comfortable if we added in a five-room exemption, you know. I think that targets more of what our intentions were when we discussed this. You know, that that's, you know, any building or part thereof with five or more rooms, you know, available as a public in or something that that would be included. So that way, if someone had a small bed and breakfast in our downtown or those Airbnb's, those would be exempted since they are smaller facilities.
I could go along with that.
Technical question I have one minute. What if somebody, one owner has six Airbnb's?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too. Individual addresses.
Yeah, they have individual addresses, but they're all under one corporation. I, I'm just asking the question.
I agree.
Or somebody starts breaking things up so that they only have five.
Or less.
Yeah, or less. You're getting a real interesting question to attend at that point, but.
I mean, the reality is it's the three percent is passed on to the renter, you know, whoever's staying the accommodations. It's really not coming out. It's not impacting because, you know, they charge the room rate and then you have the applicable taxes on top of that. So. So I mean, if you wanna leave it broad, we can leave it broad. We could always amend it at another time, but.
I would say it's easier to leave it broad and then exempt other, make exemptions later than to create a bunch of exemptions and take them away.
Yeah, we can do the first reading as is, and we've got two weeks to think about it and hash it out for the second reading.
You've got some material here to take a good hard look at. That's gonna draw more questions out and, you know. Before we jump to an end conclusion, I agree with what you're saying. Okay. Dan, you're right. Let's leave it broad and then close it down and make it work at that particular time.
Any other comments? Do you have any call the roll?
Listen?
Yes.
D'Antonio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Thank you. As the conclusion of new business, at this time on the agenda, it's, it's an opportunity for anyone out there in the audience that would like to make a comment to council. Anybody has any comments?
Mm-hmm. So is it a basketball team?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amanda Boker. I am part owner of the Peter Pedler on Main Street where we are currently in our forty-seventh year and are a third generation. Unfortunately, I'm coming to the council this evening to continue my ongoing plea to be more mindful of the street closures on Main Street. While the events encourage more business for some shopkeepers, it is not always the case for most. I believe that this is where you will point out that I'm normally in the minority in this, this feeling. I truly believe that that is not the case. As the world continues through the, through this cancel culture time period, less and less people wanna stand up and be heard for the fear of backlash on their business. Even before this meeting, I received some text messages informing me of the negative light that I'm currently being portrayed in about this current situation. I've spoken to many shop owners while they are frustrated. None were interested in attending the meeting. It is disappointing, but for me, failure to stand up and speak out means that my business will suffer and it's my job to advocate for it. I cannot in good conscience keep quiet at this time. I don't understand how some minor adjustments to timeframes or dates could be such a bad thing. I approached the council pre-COVID and requested that the first Friday of start times be adjusted in the future due to low foot traffic and early beginnings. I missed a word, sorry. Um, it would allow the stores to complete their normal workdays without interruption. I took a firing squad line of questioning, defending myself and had an outgoing chamber member at the meeting stand up and agree with my suggestion and provoked. I've approached Mr. Willard on numerous occasions, completely frustrated with the lack of concern of day-to-day business for the Main Street shops. Personally, I have reached a point where I am beyond frustrated. I believe in our town and I believe in our leadership and our leadership, and I am unsure how we go about fixing the issue at hand. Poor planning of two different events this year will cost my store alone thousands of dollars. This is a considerable amount in the current economy. I'm referring to the Chalk Art Festival in which the street was closed for two and a half days over the Fourth of July weekend. And now the current Diesel Dying Breed Show that will take place on the first and busiest day of Christmas in the woods. That day is personally my best day of the entire month of October. The last time that I talked with Mr. Willard and voiced my upset concerns, he offered to come run my business for me and teach me how not to lose money. I have to believe in my heart that while some members of the council may not like me, they do not wanna see downtown, they do want to see the downtown businesses succeed, especially in a case such as ours. We have made the investment and we own our property. We have made our dedication clear. We're not leaving. We believe in Main Street. Now I propose this question to you. How do we come up with a fix that eliminates these problems in the future? Does a store owner calendar need to be put in place during high-volume events? Can we begin to utilize Sundays so that foot traffic is driven into the town when there is none? Can we, are, can our beautifully restored park be used for some events to avoid long-time street closures? I assure you, this is a problem shared by multiple storefronts. On a personal note, standing here in front of you is not an easy feat. By doing so, I will personally become the bad guy, portrayed as someone who doesn't want anyone but herself to succeed because I'm complaining about outside events. It is important that in my last statement be heard, I am not saying to cancel your events only to make the proper adjustments so that instead of a few stores succeeding, we all succeed. Because isn't that what is truly best for the downtown? Also on the bottom, I haven't closed a conversation that I had with Mr. Tucker about the upcoming event. So there's no question about what and how things were discussed. I did not ask him to cancel his event only to become, only to be aware of Christmas in Woods for the, Christmas in the Woods for the upcoming years. Thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Oh, thank you for taking the time to explain it and face to face. That's what, you know, people will take a harder look at it. You know, and it's shame on those people that are trying to chastise anyone for trying to make us a better community and get things out there and know.
Well, it's a hard step to take because unfortunately what happens is I get looked at as a bad guy because I don't want you to close at four o'clock. That's not necessarily it. If the business doesn't call for it right at that time, let's adjust the business. Unfortunately, and it is completely my fault that I did not realize that the truck show is happening during the first Saturday. There's five weekends this year. And so normally dying breed takes place in the last weekend of September, first weekend of October. But with those five weekends, Shaker falls on the eighth and the ninth. And I forget what the next weekend is, but it falls. So it does still fall in its customary timeframe. But so that would have meant dying breeds normally would fall in that first weekend section. So it's a little disheartening on my end. I know not everybody has a lot of business from Shaker and the business owners have been getting together once a month and trying to brainstorm ideas of ways that we can continue to bring business down to us, things that would be effective for us. We were currently in the progress of trying to get some metal signs made from municipal signs. I believe Kristin DeBoer is going to take over that. But we wanted to get some signs made for outside of Shaker because unfortunately we got a great opportunity last August. We were able to set up a Shaker Woods for last weekend. They had a vendor that had had an emergency surgery. So Lana asked us to fill in, which was awesome. But we took our flyer that, that I make up every year, or I should say for the second year now. Out of a hundred flyers on the first day, I passed out seventy. Out of seventy passed out flyers, at least fifty people said that they had no idea that Columbia was five minutes away. And I feel like we're just losing out on a huge market in some certain areas. Um, I mean, but there has to be an easier way. Like I feel poorly that I, I feel bad that I get portrayed as the bad guy when I come up and say, what are we doing? I feel like, can we, can we create a calendar? Um, we have a, a page that Mr. Listening is a part of. Um, and Jamie Hogan, without being in any of the meetings, said exactly what we were talking about this morning. Can't we create a calendar that focuses on all the events so that we don't have these overlaps where we know about them ahead of time to try to prevent them in a situation like this?
I'm sure you're a chamber member.
No, I am not. I actually withdrew from the chamber a few years ago. Um, unfortunately, I didn't feel that the chamber had my best interest at heart at the time. So I actually did what we started out in the chamber and then just, that's a separate situation. Like I said, it wasn't anything they did. I just felt like for the money that I was paying into it, they were paying attention to like three businesses. And there are a lot of businesses. So I removed myself from that situation.
So myself, I would love to have, like, if, if you have a calendar of dates that you'd like for us to avoid. I mean, you know, obviously it's not a guarantee, right?
Right.
But if you have a calendar of dates, you'd say, hey, please don't close Main Street on these days. That is something I would certainly pay attention to as we're, as we're having these conversations.
Well, it's an interesting thing, cause if you think about it, this weekend alone.
This is a weird.
On Saturday, we actually have three events happening in town on Saturday.
This.
One of them closes Main Street, which is the dying breed, which starts at two o'clock. We have the Beer Fest at a Firestone Farms, which the school is putting on to help raise money to redo the stadium, which is another fabulous event. And then we have Christmas in the woods, which brings in thousands of people. So in this short day, something like this, the traffic that is going to be flowing through this town is insane.
Also, we have the fire department safety day.
Oh, that's correct. That's on Saturday too, and that's behind us. So that's four events on Saturday with how much traffic that's gonna flow through on Saturday. So it's little things like that. Do you know what I mean? That, you know, if you think about it, how many people complain about the first day of Shaker Woods? I mean, they have the perfect storm. It's beautiful weather. It's the first day. You have to get there before all the good stuff's gone. And we have traffic congestion down all the roads. So it just seems, it seems odd to me that we would wanna take away the ability to freely drive down Main Street to make it easier for out-of-towners to figure out where they're going. When we don't put any signs in place to direct them to other parking, I don't know whether it would help or not, we don't know. But that's another option. Can we put things up that direct people when we close the street where they should be going to park?
I think one of the things you need to refer back to, and I, and I, I think this is a strong suggestion. I think that community calendar idea, if it's, if it's brainstormed and worked with and refined. Okay, but it can't, you know, your frustration is very formidable. You can see that.
Right.
But some people, you know, they, they don't do, they don't, you gotta get involved with it. Okay. And I know if you're through from the chamber, there's personal reasons there or whatever.
Oh, I hope you have whatever calendar you need. I have no problem.
It's, it's gotta be done by multiple merchants.
Right.
And.
I can get them to participate in that.
And like with the moxie thing that's going on, okay, that, that takes care of one of those days too. Okay. You need a congenial set of thoughts in order to make that master calendar, because that's no fun. It's, I've been in those.
When it comes to something like a master calendar, I think that there are quite a few of the merchants that would happily jump on board and not a problem. But when it comes to something where we're standing up here, and there is a lot of backlash from this. Like I said, I received a text earlier this morning saying that I'm being bad mouthed. I'm not gonna say who, I'm not gonna say when, that's not the point. But I hadn't even spoken to anyone.
That's, that's, that's my, that's my suggestion, you know, and run with it. If it, if it doesn't work, you can always change something.
Yeah, I think that it would be beneficial for everyone because, you know, not only that, but you want people to visit all your events. Do you know what I mean? Like you want them to participate in all the events. So now you're kind of, if you wanna hang out at the truck show, well, you can't really go to crap. You know what I mean? It just, it's a good idea. You have a lot going on and that's great. But if we tweak things here and there, I feel like everybody would be very happy. And like I said, this is an exception to the rule. Shaker Woods, Christmas in the Woods, and I've spoken, you know, in the past about it. Those are huge days for downtown merchants. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money that I'm leaving on the table. And I can stay open for the truck show. But I have people that come and seek me out because they buy, they want to buy what I'm selling. Not someone who's there for something else who may, may fall in love with my business, if that makes sense. So to me, it's upsetting because I, I'm gonna have to try to push them in the direction, you know what I mean? Like they don't have that free, they don't have that freely available to them. So I mean, it's just, it's very disheartening is really the only word that I can say about that one. I mean, first Friday, it's not something that we get involved in. I close, it's no big deal. You know, I don't, it's fine. You know, we've tried it over years in the past. It doesn't, it's not successful for my particular business. That's okay. You can have it. They do close the street at three for the events to start at five. You know, why couldn't we close the street at five for the events to start at six? They get a very good turnout after people come home from dinner, you know, and after around dinnertime, they're popping at six o'clock. So, you know, that would give your four, your four o'clock rush hour time to get off there. That would also give the street, which normally empties out, starts to empty out around four o'clock. You know what I mean? It would alleviate some headaches. But then we go into the whole, you know, there's a whole separate where they say they can't do bounce houses and things, you know, if it's starting. But I just, if I don't speak up and tell you how I feel, I don't believe in doing it secondhand. You shouldn't have to hear it from someone else how I feel. If I don't tell you what my problem is, you have no idea what my problem is. So I wanted to take this time and I wanted to reach out to you and tell you, you know, how I felt about this issue. And like I said, had I seen it before, I, I would have stepped up earlier. I really, we've done Shaker Woods, Fanfield Fair, Johnny Appleseed, Oktoberfest, the street fair in the middle, which we had, you know, it's been a very, very fast two months for me. And I apologize, I just didn't see it to actually bring anyone attention that it might cause an actual money issue. So.
I'll, I'll say again, because I, I, my scout troop was involved in Christmas in the Woods every year. So I know those dates, you know, probably as well as anybody. And it just didn't occur to me. And because I'd, I'd have talked to Brayden about it and said, hey Brayden, can we move this because of Christmas in the woods? I know it's a busy time for, for the downtown market. So I, if you can give us something to work with, something.
Right. You can tell me when you would like to have it at the beginning of the year so we can try to avoid some of this when we start opening up stuff. I think.
The earlier you can give us information.
So.
The better off. Like you, you know, when it, when Shaker Woods Festival is, you know, when Christmas in the Woods is every year. Exactly. So if you could just say, if you could just, if you could just say to us, hey guys, try not to close Main Street on these five weekends.
Right.
That's easier to do.
We have to bump it to eight. Um, we have open house in the week before Mother's Day. We would probably ask that we don't have a street closure.
I mean.
Do you know what I mean?
But I, I mean, we're also ignoring, there are multiple merchants that do their best business when the streets are closed and yeah. So I mean, who do we cater to?
Think you would find that the scales unfolding tipped in the other direction. But like I said, there's a lot of people that aren't, they just, there's a big backlash from this. So I know the businesses that you're speaking of really, really well. And unfortunately, it's not.
I.
And that's something you could take a look at.
Yeah. And because we're not hearing from those other ones that are apparently not doing well.
Yes.
Yeah.
For public discussions. Uh, I, I just wanna say, but I've heard two people here say, it looks like, you know, why don't you come back with the schedule?
You know, I think that's where we should handle. I, I, I would say at least give us something to work with and then we can go. Could be, cause it may be, we're, we're none of, we, we don't run any overlaps that way. Or maybe something where we go, we come back to go, look, we really wanna do this on this weekend is, you know, there can be some negotiation, but if we don't have information in front of us.
Which is why I'm here this evening.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're, we're always open to talk to people.
I'd really like to think that it was truly an oversight, that the street was not closed. Not known, but they're big events. So.
It was an oversight because it just, we, you know, like I said, I knew, I know those dates as well as you do, and I, it just didn't occur to me.
And you can see in my messages with Mr. Brayden and all, I said, next year when you're planning, just something to keep in the back of your head that this is actually. this is actually, I mean, granted, your, your event's good for, you know, some people, but this one's a big one for everybody.
Yeah, so.
I, I would, I, I'd just like to say, I lost the bubble on that one too. Shaker was never entered my mind.
Yeah.
Uh, whether that would have changed the outcome or not, I have no idea. But if you can come up with, with a, a chart, graph, something that says these are the dates that are important to us and get the rest of the storefront owners to, to kind of agree with it, get everything down. The hardest part is gonna be keeping it up to date.
No, it doesn't change. It's the same eight weekends every year.
Okay.
So it really doesn't change. Sorry.
Very good, thank you.
Any other public comments? Anyone else have any words of wisdom for us tonight? Okay, hearing none, I've turned to our council members. Any comments from up here tonight?
I just had one thing to add um for Amanda. We're closing the road at four o'clock Friday.
Okay.
This Friday.
What time on Saturday?
Uh, I wanna think noon, yeah, noon. Yeah. And then the other big news is this calendar that you're talking about, we already have it. We spent eighteen months creating it about a year and a half, two years ago. So it's, it's, we need, we just need more people. So basically, we have this interactive calendar that we can upload things to. So the city uploads theirs. Chamber can upload theirs. The tourism can upload theirs, and we can give you a key to it and you can upload yours. And then Best Western has a key to it also, so we can I mean, the calendar's already done, it's created, it's just, it hasn't been getting the wheels that we wanted it to. People, people just haven't used it like we wanted it to, so if we put another push on that, I think that'll help. So that calendar took eighteen months to design. It's done, it's ready, it's, it's good to go.
If, if we know the information's on there, we can hurt.
Right.
So it's, it really is a question of, we just need the information because that way, you know, it gives us something to work with.
Yeah.
And thi- this happened because everybody forgot that Shaker Woods.
It happened with the chalk festival a couple of years ago. Remember I spoke to you about that one when we went on the half-hearted street? It was Shaker Woods weekend. It was Christmas in Woods weekend for the chalk festival when it first started before COVID, and we spoke about it then too. Um, so I, I understand there's a lot of things that you guys do, and there's a lot of balls in the air, but it was a really big festival, and they really do make a difference downtown. They're very large, other than our open houses and the Christmas parade, those are our biggest event of the year.
Yeah.
For everyone. I'm not saying just a few, I mean, everyone has a good type of activity.
And we don't want to hurt the downtown businesses. Um, so I, I would, I would frankly rather, you know, if, had we known this, we probably would have asked Brayden to go a week earlier and said, hey, you know, because that way, he, whatever, the, whatever boost he gives downtown, we get that weekend, and then you get the boost downtown from Shaker Woods. So there's a lot of pluses here if we, if we plan it right, and we just, we didn't have the information.
It's not a situation where everyone is gonna be happy, but there are a few minor tweaks that can make a lot of difference.
Yeah, and, and we wanna work with people. We don't wanna, we, we know, we're all residents of this town too, and we wanna make sure everyone's succeeding, so. Um, for sure, just, you know, Lance can work with you on getting you a key to that calendar and upload stuff, and if we know it's there, we'll get it.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to say first that I'd like to apologize to councilmen for not attending for, for not being present for the meeting and not being on my computer for the meeting. I had computer problems and had to switch things out, but I will be at the next meeting uh with council.
Thanks, Dick. Appreciate it. Okay.